So I'd like to call this meeting to order, sorry for any delay, 7:03. We'd like to start off with, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the following forces stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and despicable.
Thank you. We'd like to open with any comments from the general public? Seeing none, welcome back to all of you who are normally here after our little break, and comments from the EAPC. Tom, how are you?
Long time no see.
Right.
No, I'll just be brief. Summer flew by, obviously. We've all, we've been working together, many of us, throughout negotiations throughout the summer. I can't believe how quick it went by. Opening day next week, look very excited about it. Excited to see the inside of the new building. Coming together, so. Happy beginning of the school year.
You get any vibe from the staff at all, from your perspective on the new building?
I mean, I just think general excitement. I mean, always opening a new building is always, you know, good for everybody, good for the students, and go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. No Jenna tonight.
Yeah, so the student advisory council will be back in September with the return of school.
So we're moving on to business, and we'll go to some minutes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 11th, the regular session minutes and the executive session minutes.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions, changes, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. And we'd like to sort of jump something up here, and I'd like to invite Chairman of the Board of Select, Mr. Alan Dunham, to join us, please.
I'll go over the next round, I guess.
Sure.
And then, just before we do that, if I can just welcome Gina Marie Rush to the table this evening.
Sorry.
Welcome.
So Gina's here, and she's here for the first time as the new recording secretary for the school committee, and here as...
I'm like, what?
And here, you know, starting her position as administrative assistant to the superintendent this year after July 1st. So I just wanted to welcome Gina to her first meeting before we get going. And then, as she's taking the minutes, I told her that she can give me a sign if we need to slow people down a little bit, so she can stay up with us. I'm sure she's gonna do a great job. She's done a great job so far, and I know she's gonna do a great job this evening and going forward.
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm gonna go right into the bus driver. So we're gonna try to move up on the agenda, Bus Driver Bargaining Agreement for 2018 through 2021. So I'd like to invite Tammy Cornwall up from the Bus Drivers Bargaining Unit. Just take a seat right up there, that'd be great. So we've reached a tentative agree-
Hi Tam.
Hi.
We have reached a tentative agreement with the bus drivers. And so, just to give a general overview of the increases that are being proposed, and everybody has a copy of the agreement in front of them this evening, we're gonna be asking the committee to take action on that tentative agreement that was negotiated. In terms of wage increases, for FY '19, it's a 1% across the board, plus an additional 25 cents for CDL drivers. For FY '20, it's a 1% across the board, plus an additional 25 cents for CDL drivers. And for FY '21, it's 1% across the board, plus an additional 25 cents for CDL drivers. So it's consistent in terms of the three years of the agreement. Currently, 16 of our 22 drivers are CDL drivers. And then, obviously, we agreed to an increase of $50 in longevity for each person, and then a series of minor language changes. My intention tonight is not to necessarily go through all the language changes, the members of the committee have a copy of those changes, and obviously, it was a good negotiation process with the bus drivers, it was a good experience, and I feel that, you know, our subcommittee that negotiated this agreement is in support of it, and we would look for the committee to approve support of it this evening, and then have Tammy and the chairperson hopefully sign a copy of the agreement. And so this time, I'd open it up to any questions or concerns people may have.
Well, how about if we, how about if we make a...
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll move that we ratify the memorandum of understanding reached between the Bus Drivers Negotiation Subcommittee and the Carver Bus Drivers Union.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, so now, any kind of questions or comments, or Mr. Dunham?
No, I looked through it, and I talked to Brad earlier today, and I want to commend the school committee, subcommittees, and the bus drivers for negotiating this contract, and it looks fair to me, and it's, you know, it's within what the town can afford, and plus, I like the fact that, you know, the CDL drivers are getting a little bit more, because my understanding, they've been lagging way behind other towns, so I am very happy with the changes I've seen, and I would wholeheartedly endorse this.
I think, I think in speaking for the committee too, in the past, in my time on this committee, I've had the privilege of sitting on a bunch of these negotiations more so recently, but this town should feel pretty appreciative and privileged for the dedication that the people that work for it put in towards it, because they do sit at the table, and they do listen, and they try to work with us the best they can, and I think that should be duly noted. And you don't really notice it as much until you're there and part of it, and I appreciate everything you guys did to come to this agreement, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, any thoughts from your perspective?
No.
So with no other questions, all those in favor, this would be a roll call, I assume?
Nope, just, nope, it could just be a...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. And then, I don't know, if you want to bring it over, and have you and Tammy each sign a copy, that would be great, and then one copy for Tammy, and one copy can go to Gina Marie.
I'm not sure you've seen this enough times. Now it is yours.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy, and we look forward to the great three years working with the bus drivers.
Okay. No worries, thanks for seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. So, we're right into reports from the superintendent?
Yeah.
So personnel updates. Over the summer, we always have some movement that occurs, we have had some movement this summer. I will say, we haven't had as much movement as we have had in maybe some previous summers, and we, during the summer, we have not had, knock on wood, we have not had any teacher resignations. The resignations have been through paraprofessionals, and then also, I want to note that, you know, Mr. Souza, the middle high school assistant principal, has resigned his position, he's taken on an assistant principal's position in a middle school in New Bedford. So I guess, since I started with resignation, I'll do resignations first, and then the addition of staff. So the resignations, retirements over the summer. Tyler Whalen, athletic trainer, Jan Santos, middle high school para, Tom Epstein, bus driver, Christine Thomas, kindergarten para, Junie Coelho, middle high school special education para, Jessica Freiberg, food services, and Mark Souza, assistant principal at the middle high school. Our additions over the past, so, sorry, over the summer, so we've added the following staff, Amory Chapetta, middle high school sped para, Christina Robinson, middle high school special education para, Erica Goodman, middle high school special education para, Douglas Borsari, special high school special education para, and Paula Hammond, 7D bus driver. These, the para hires aren't necessarily one for one, it's not necessarily that one person replaces another para, sometimes there's some movement within the para group that gets shifted around. We actually still have a couple of open para positions in the district, and Mr. Souza's position right now is obviously still open, that's been posted, and actually, they're gonna be doing some interviews this week. So the goal would be, on the middle high school assistant principal position, would be to fill that prior to the kids, students returning to school. You know, obviously, we're gonna take the time that we need to fill the position, and we're not gonna rush to do that, but if we feel comfortable, and we have the right candidate to move forward, it would be great if we could have someone in place when the students return on September 4th.
To that context too, I was at the athletic meeting the other night, when I didn't make that other meeting, and there, we are still looking for an athletic trainer, yes.
Yes, we are, we are. The athletic trainer position has not been filled, the position has been posted, we do have some applicants, and we're moving forward in the interview process for that, but at this time, that position has not been filled. Obviously, the same goal there, is that we'll try to, we'd love to get that, obviously, fall sports have started, but we'd love to get that position filled prior to students returning to school. And at this time, it's being covered through EMS and through basically some contracted services. So it's not that we don't have an athletic trainer available.
Quick question on Mr. Souza's position, do you already, has a hiring team already been put together as far as it has?
Yes, yes.
And is there a possibility for any school committee member to be a part of that?
The individuals are already scheduled, I mean, my recommendation, honestly, would be not to be, because I think historically, historically, we've not had school committee members serving on interview committees for positions. I think that would be a larger discussion of the committee if that's, I think that would be something you'd have to have a discussion about, what's our process and that? You know, do we want to have, and if we were gonna have committee members serve on an interview committee, that that would become our, you know, almost a policy piece of, you know, for these positions, school committee members will serve on the committee.
Which we still have to deal with, that policy issue.
Right.
That Sunday thing didn't work.
And, and so, you know, ultimately, I'm not, I'm not looking to not have the school committee be involved, but I think that, you know, we should take a more global view of that concept, and say, is this something we want to do? And then also, it goes back to, from my perspective, it goes back to the piece of, ultimately, you hire me as the superintendent to carry out the policies and to run the school district, and to include, that includes hiring personnel and going through that process. But I'm more than open to having that discussion, but like I said, I think, I think we should have a little bit of consistency on that.
Yeah, great.
You know, whether, and we can have that discussion going forward.
No problem. At our, at our last subcommittee, and I'll just piggyback that for a minute, and then we'll move on, but at our last policy subcommittee meeting, that was kind of the conversation, like Scott had said, you know, when, when the teacher handbook, there's a lot of things in that, you're not gonna sit there and review every piece of that in the beginning, you pick those things that you really need to focus and prioritize on, and I think as far as policies go, we need to do some of that, and make sure we have the clarity to, that that's there, and that's on the website, and that's, you're picking sort of those fundamental ideas that we want to make sure are more clear, and adding on those things that you're, like you're talking about. But that would really take the time for us to sit and review what we would prioritize in that. A lot of it's already done, Andy saw the book the other day.
Yes, the physical book.
The physical book. So, but I would definitely, I don't think we should let that slide there, Andrew, I think that's something that we should...
Yeah, sounds good, we'll look at it in the beginning of the year.
Yep. Thank you.
Grand opening ceremony.
Grand opening. So I think, I think the community is aware, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that the date for the grand opening has been changed. Tentatively, it's been moved to Thursday, September 20th. I say tentatively because we still do not have confirmation from the MSBA that they'll be able to attend that evening, and which, the goal is that we would work in coordination with them, because they like to be there for all the grand openings, they like to be present, they like to, you know, ultimately, the MSBA is funding a large portion of, a good, you know, 54.2% of the project, so their involvement is kind of a key piece of that. So we've reached out to them, we just haven't, we don't have confirmation yet. The secondary date we gave was the next Thursday, September 27th. Hopefully, we'll have confirmation soon, within the next, I would hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have confirmation, so we can start, so we can solidify that date and put it out to everybody. So right now, it's tentatively Thursday, September 20th, 5 o'clock, starting at 5 o'clock. Now, I want to talk a little bit about why it was, I think people have to know why, but again, I'll give kind of overview of why the decision to move the grand opening was made. You know, the demolition of the GJC building took a little longer than anticipated, and ultimately, there were several factors there. There was a little bit of additional asbestos that was found on the outside of the building around the windows, and also, the way the building was coming down didn't necessarily meet their expectations. And the reality is, we were concerned that the parking lot and the entrance and exit roads would not be completed prior to the scheduled grand opening on August 29th, and we decided that that would really be problematic to have the grand opening if we didn't have access to a parking facility, and we didn't have the real entrance and exit roads, that would be a concern. Also, we just, we're just getting to the point of planting grass around the inside of the fire loop. Unfortunately, I don't know if people saw, they hydroseeded over there, I believe, last Friday, and Saturday's torrential rain didn't help very much, so a lot of that hydroseed got washed away, so they're gonna have to come back and reseed. But ultimately, you know, within the next week, they're gonna be seeding, and in our minds, the building's subcommittee looked at it and said, you know, on the 29th, we're really not gonna have a completed project. There was a question of whether we were gonna have a parking lot completed, there was a question whether the entrance and exit roads were gonna be completed, that we knew we weren't gonna have grass, and ultimately, we felt like the grand opening really should be a celebration of a more finished product. Now, obviously, there's, we've always known the Phase 2 work, the fields, was not gonna be done until the end of September, I mean, sorry, the end of November, so there was no intention of having a grand opening after the fields were done, but we just felt like the parking was a huge constraint. Now, that being said, I want to be really clear, because people have still asked this question, and so there's been a little discussion in the community of, school's not gonna be ready on September 4th, so that is not the case. We will be ready for students on September 4th, school will be open on September 4th, the elementary school will open on that day. It's actually become pretty clear in the past couple days, the demolition team puts in some extra time, they were working Saturdays, they were working 10-hour days, and now, Robert Beauer, who's doing the parking lot, is putting in extra time, they worked this past Saturday, they had actually had a skeleton career on Sunday, so there's a, there's actually a chance that the binder for the parking lot will be down next week for the opening of the school for the teachers, with the entrance road and the exit road and all those pieces in place, and they've made some real progress in the last couple days. So we're, you know, confidence is, I shouldn't even say confidence, school will be open on September 4th for students. We're gonna be able to do that, that's not, that's not gonna be an issue. So ultimately, we're looking forward to the grand opening ceremony, happening on hopefully Thursday, September 20th, once that date is confirmed, we'll get that information out to the community, and I think we're gonna really look forward to seeing, when you get people, the community's gonna be impressed when they see the building. And when Ruby comes up in, actually, the next presentation, Ruby's gonna talk about exit and entrance, and student drop-off, and student pickup, and she's also gonna go through some dates of upcoming things that are happening in the school, but I think people are gonna be really excited when they see the inside of the building, it really looks great, there's some great things going on there. So I guess my clear restatement of message is that the grand opening has moved, it's not August 29th, hopefully it'll be Thursday, September 20th, but school will be open for students on September 4th, and we'll be ready for our elementary students in grades 1 through 5 to come to school on that day.
So without further ado, how are they gonna get there, Ruby?
It's so exciting, I can't tell you, I mean, the excitement is just building and building, and I can't wait for the kids to see the school.
Me neither.
I just, I just want to be able to see them as they're coming in the door with their excitement, and it is, you know, I'll talk a little bit more about the kids and our plan for the first day, but may as well just get started with the pickup and, and drop-off. And it's going to probably be easier for me if I just go up to the, to the swing as I go through this whole process. So, again, it's just so exciting, and I can't thank all of you enough, and the teachers who have been working so hard for the last week and a half. Wednesday, we had the clearance to get into the school and start unpacking, people have just been in there working and getting everything ready for the, for our kids, so it's so exciting.
So Ruby, I know it's hard, but the parents at home won't hear you unless we have, unless you have a mic, so I don't know if you have enough cord for you to hold the mic.
All right. Okay, we can do this. So go ahead, and if you can, Meredith, for me, so, if you'll do me a favor, go to the next slide. So we're gonna take a look at this slide first. So here is our new school, the biggest and most important change that I really just want to emphasize is our new entrance, our new entrance is our old exit. So we are going to have a detail officer for about a week, maybe two weeks, depending on how things go, out on Route 58 to help us out with that. We will also have staff, and myself, my administrators, and other staff out along the route outside, Mr. Neef will also be there as much as he is able to, to help us out and to help direct traffic. So what will happen, again, I'm going to just go over drop-off for parent pickup for the moment, so parents that are dropping off their children will enter the new entrance. There are two lanes, so there are two lanes coming in the same direction, the left lane is going to be labeled on the pavement, there will also be signage that will say buses only, so buses will take the left lane, they will come all the way here, you'll see the gray area, then they're going to come on to the back and enter what is our fire lane and our new drop-off, okay? The parents that are driving in are along the red route. Staff members will also likely be coming in right around the same time, or a bit earlier, and they're gonna go into the staff parking. Parents that are dropping off will come along the red, as soon as the buses take their route, parents will be able to move into the left lane, right here, there will be people on hand to direct parents, and they're going to pull all the way up into this area. Right now, there are yellow posts out in this area, right here. That's what we call the drop-off zone. It will be marked on the pavement, it'll say drop-off zone, and we will be out there to help. So there will be, it's approximately a 25-foot section that is the drop-off zone area, right here at the end where that big red dot is, that's where we're going to have parents dropping off their, their students. And we will continue with that process, we ask that parents have their children in the backseat, we want them to be on the left, if at all possible, so that they can come right onto the sidewalk, and it's as safe and slow as possible, and we're just gonna ask that everyone's slow, and take it easy as we all work through any, any kinks. What's nice about this system is it's, we have much more room for parents to queue. Previous years, we would back up the traffic on 58, just because we have on average 75 to 125 vehicles coming in for drop-off on a daily basis. So that's the, the parent drop-off, the times for parents to drop off their children has not changed, that still is 8 to 8:15, we have a 15-minute window to drop off. And just for, for folks, just so that they're aware, we've had questions as to why we can't have that be a longer time, why can't we open that up to 25 or 30 minutes? And it's really because school does start at 8:15, we want the children to be in and ready to start in their classrooms, and we really don't have the supervision till, till 8:00 AM. We will be running our breakfast program again this year, and it'll start the very first, first day of school. So if you can go to the next slide, actually, let's take a look at this one, and if we have any questions now, or things that are on your mind that you feel you need clarification on.
Are there any visible signs, so where it says buses only, that'll be written into the ground, correct?
Yes, and there will be signage here.
That will be visible, up?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Not there yet, but we put that in.
Okay, so just bear with us, if it's not there on day one, it is something coming.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. We anticipate that the, as Mr. Neef said, the binder will be down, hopefully, at some point next week, and then there'll be lining and, you know, marking the lines, we're gonna have the bus drivers come ahead of time so that they can just drive the route and understand their piece as well, and everyone just gonna, we're gonna take it slow, like I said, the detail officer outside on Main Street...
Obviously, that's the biggest piece to emphasize, is the entrance and the exit have swapped.
Right.
You know, that's gonna be the biggest change for people, is realizing that what, what used to be the exit is now the entrance, and vice versa. And having a police detail out there the first week is gonna really help that.
Will there be any signage at the entrance and exit?
Well, there's, there's gonna, there's gonna be signage from the standpoint of, there's not gonna be a sign that says entrance, but the, the stone pillow that is like the sign for the building is at the entrance, the building committee's approved a visual lighted sign, that's gonna be a little bit past the entrance, so there's gonna be markers like that that indicate this is the entrance to the school, and normally, you'd see a sign at the entrance that welcomes you to the school, and we're gonna have that, it's at the entrance, but there's, you know, there's no sign that says entrance.
Entrance only?
Right.
Or one-way?
We will have a one-way sign, because we've had one-way signs before, and we'll probably have to put signs up on the other side that says exit only.
Right. And the detail officer will be important, and the chief of police was at the school the other day, and he, you know, he's going to actually have, they have a sign that they set up sometimes with information, it's the orange...
Electronic?
Electronic board, so they're going to set that up and help us out with that as well, and if they have any extra, or not extra, but available duty officers on those mornings, they're going to send them over to the school to help us.
Do I, just while the, while the pictures app, do you want to talk about bus drop-off, just where the kid's gonna get off in the back?
Yes. So bus drop-off will be, this is, this is the fire lane, and it's bus drop-off only, so parents cannot enter into this area. Actually, no one can, it's for buses only and for emergency vehicles. So buses will pull in here, we have approximately 17 buses, and that does include our, our smaller special education buses and vans, so they will come into the back, this is the first wing, this is one of our courtyards, this is another courtyard here, but this area right here, in this area, is where the buses will drop off the students, and there are several staff members that are on duty, including myself and Mrs. Dawson, who are out greeting the students and helping them off the bus every day, so it won't be any different, but this year, obviously, we're gonna take it a little bit slower and really work with them on that, because it's all, it's all new to all of us. But the plan is to have the buses drop off in the back and have our students enter, there's an entrance, this little triangle here, that's an entrance, this other entrance here, those doors will be staffed, and students will be able to walk along the sidewalk and enter into the school through these two entrances.
Thank you, Ruby.
And then the buses are going, are able to go all the way out and around, and there's a gate here.
Gate, yeah.
The gate here, and there's another one here. So after bus drop-off, right around 8:15, the, once the last bus leaves, those gates will be closed.
We talked about that at the committee also, because deliveries will be coming over on that side of the building, so it gated it off, so deliveries won't interact with any of the playgrounds or anything like that in any way.
Right. So we are working all, well, most of those details are already worked out, it's just now a matter of, once the parking in this area is all set, we'll actually be able to walk it, so even if it's the, the evening before, we'll be out there walking and just making sure all the signs are all set and inaccurate, and, and it'll all work out. We're very excited, the kids are so, I can't wait for the kids to come, I can't tell you enough about that. So we also wanted to just talk to you a little bit more about afternoon, so afternoon pickup is, we still, we'll have afternoon parent pickup, so that's going to begin at 2:55, it's very similar to last year. We started a program last year called Coyote Car Riders, it's basically our parents who pick up, we, what we did is, we had our parents remain in their vehicle, as opposed to parking their car, going inside, signing them out at the security desk. So we changed it to a system where parents who are interested in the program, they complete a form explaining their days that they are... they complete a form explaining their days that they are picking up their child. And we provided them a placard with all of their information. The placard goes on their car, and they pull into the school. And we are out there, we use our radios, have the students ready, and they board the vehicles. We're going to continue with our Coyote Car Rider program because it was, it was very successful. And it's just a way, another way for us to reach out to our parents, be supportive, have even possibly just a few seconds to say good afternoon or give them a little bit of information. It's another way for us to connect with them. So we will continue with the car rider. It's, it's not a program that you have to use. If you prefer to park your car and go into the school, you're absolutely welcome to do that. All we ask is that you provide identification and just notify us. Our Coyote Car Rider program won't start this year until September twenty-fourth, and that's because we want to make sure that we get all of the forms home to our parents, that they fill them out, they send them back, and that we have everything ready. But that will happen again at two fifty-five. What'll be nice for us this year and going forward is we have two different pickup locations. The buses are in the back and the parents are in the front.
Ruby, someone asked a question about, about the Y program. I'm assuming the Y is communicating, but what is, what are they doing?
So the Y will have their before-school program and their after-school program similarly to the past. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow morning. They're coming in and making sure they have everything set up. They're going to be using the multipurpose room as their sort of main, after, main station.
So that, I guess that's my question, pickup and drop off, like where will they do that?
And they're going to do that in the parking lot. So they'll park their stu, they'll park in the parking lot and go in and bring them in because they have a different procedure.
Yeah, so they'll bring them in to the multipurpose room.
They'll bring them in.
Right to the main entrance.
And what's nice about the, right. And they, they're set up in the multipurpose room for a couple of reasons. We wanted them to have view of the parents and the kids when they're coming in and when they're picking them up at six o'clock in the evening also. So the building will be secure. They'll have to just walk out of the multipurpose room, go, have their parents come in because they have a sign-in procedure. But again, the parents will be able to park here in the visitor parking, enter the main building, and then come, go to the Y, and then the same at the end of the day. But that's a good question. All right, so anything else on drop off or pickup?
I want to add one thing also, just going through the process. I think when you're talking about safety, Ruby, because this is going to be important with your, your next presentation. But just so people are aware, although it's not manned fully all the time yet, the, the school resource officer, their office is right there at the front entrance of the school.
Yes.
So yeah, the school resource officer's office is at the front entrance of the school outside of the door, the first entry door. So they'd have to, in essence, go past that office before entering into any door. And now we're in process of working on plans with the police to, we've, we've been, we've put out some ideas.
Yeah.
And we're, those ideas are in a discussion on how we can maybe man that on a more, more full-time basis, realizing right now the SRO is supporting both the middle high school and the elementary school. And there's also a reality of some, sometimes the SRO's responsibilities and the work he's doing or that Officer Wall is going to be doing is in the school or with parents or not necessarily in that front office entryway. So our goal is to try to set some things up in place to have, have someone there on a regular basis.
I think that's, I think that's an important factor, you know?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it has to be these days, but it really is.
Yeah, and as Mr. Neef mentioned, the chief is very committed to having, you know, support at the, at the elementary school. And at one of the parent meetings that we had actually back in April, Mr. Neef and Chief Dufly talked a lot about the possibility of having, you know, one of the officers or when they're writing their reports, go to the elementary and write their reports there at the school. So you have a couple of things.
There's always a presence.
Right.
Yeah, we talked about that actually being a substation of the police station so that any duty officer could go there and write reports just as being there.
I just, I'd just like to commend on that too, the, the relationship that the chief and Mr. Neef have and how well they've worked together. And I think it's been a great improvement in what's been going on, and they're very collaborative. I think it's going to work awesome for the, for the students and families.
It's exciting because they want to be there.
And I think, right, I think that's the same, I think it goes beyond the chief and I. I think really that, you know, Mrs. Dawson, Mrs. Foley, Mr. Souza, formerly with us, Mrs. Holly, actually worked really hard in terms of bringing forward our Alice procedures and protocols and have worked closely with a lot of the police officers in the, in the district beyond, beyond the SRO, beyond the chief, which I think is great because a lot of, a lot of the town's offices have had exposures to the schools, exposure to the school personnel, has built relationships with school personnel, has been in the buildings frequently, and are just more and more comfortable working with the schools and working in the buildings. And I think we, as the school administration, are more comfortable working with the police. So I think, you know, it goes beyond just the chief and I.
And when you have not just the SRO, but a varied sense of officers in that front office and in the building and a presence there, the students are more aware of who they are, they're more aware of who the students are, kind of seems to tend to lean towards a benefit, so. I think so.
So I also wanted to take just a few minutes before we move on to just talk a little bit about the first day of school because I, I'm sure that many of our parents are feeling just a little bit uneasy because we typically at the elementary school, we have what's called a find-your-classroom activity or in this year, we were going to have the ribbon cutting, the grand opening or an open house prior to the first day. This year is unique because we're not in a position where we can have our doors open and have everyone come in, just because of what Mr. Neef explained earlier. So we've been working out a plan for the first day to have all of our teachers on hand, even extra sets of hands to help us with the students. So as I had explained to you earlier, when the buses are dropping off in the back, most of you already know this, but Ms. Dawson and I and a couple other staff members are always out on the bus circle, getting on the bus. We get on each bus and we talk to the kids, we greet them, and we, we talk about a character trait or we talk about something that we're all working together on. So it won't be any different this year. We will be talking to them on the first day about the, the procedure for that day because they're going to be so filled with excitement, they haven't seen the school. And I want our parents and guardians to feel really comfortable about our plan because they just have not seen the school. So our goal is to get them off the buses carefully, safely into, we have, as you all know, we have two stories. We have, on our first floor, we have a gathering area. On our second floor, we have another gathering area. These gathering areas are amazing, they're absolutely beautiful. They, you can have close to, you know, one hundred and fifty, maybe a little bit more of our students sitting there or, or even not sitting, standing, talking, just meeting each other. We're going to have our kids go to the gathering areas where there will be supervision and there will be support for them. We don't, the students don't need to know who their teacher is. All they need to know is just their name, just their name. Because we, we have a plan where we will supervise the kids. We will put them in their grade level order, and then in their teacher order, we will have their rosters. And we will get them then to their, to their teacher. And their teacher's going to tour them. It's going to be a day of tours. It's going to be a day of visiting and exploring that, that new school.
They're all going to be awestruck. They are.
They're going to be, you're right, James. Just thinking about it and just, you know, the colors in that school, it's just so vibrant, it's so energetic. It, you're just going to be, the kids will be so energized just walking in there. And it's going to be a very exciting day, it's going to be an unusual day. But we also know that it's not going to just be that on that day. We know that that first week, for this whole year really, this whole year, we're all going to be.
Learning.
Learning and figuring out, figuring it out.
Using those multipurpose rooms, they're like individual classes, whole grade levels, dropdown screens.
The project, yeah, right. It is, it's absolutely incredible. But the point I just really wanted to make was I wanted to ease our parents' concern about that first day of school. That we will all be getting in there that first day with all of the kids, and it'll be new to all of them. We understand that there'll be some anxiety and some, you know, concern. But we will all be there, all of the teachers, all of the paras. We have extra, anyone that's, we have kindergarten teachers who don't have kindergarten starting that first day, so they will all be there, they'll help with our, our first through fifth graders. Then kindergarten starts the next week. Kindergarten is in a different situation because parents are coming in with their children. And they have an orientation on Tuesday. So, so they'll be able to come in with their students and go to their classroom, meet the teacher, and they'll be together.
Nice.
So definitely, that, that helps a little bit with kindergarten and preschool as well. Any questions about that first day of school or first week of school?
Thank you, Ruby.
All right. Okay, so I just wanted to go over a couple of other, other dates. So as I mentioned, September fourth is the first day of school for first through fifth grade. Then we have September fifth and sixth, our kindergarten screening appointments. Then we have, September tenth is the first day of school for preschool and kindergarten. And September eleventh is our open house for grades one and two. And September twelve is open house for grades three through five. And open house starts at six on both, on those evenings. I will be sending information out to parents next week. Typically, I send them information in a newsletter on the first day, but we're going to do it early. We'll give it, we'll send it out to them through our Schoolway app a week ahead of time. A lot of this information that I'm sharing with you so that they have it in pictures and visuals.
Is it on the event calendar too, on the?
We'll put it on the event calendar, and it'll be on the website also. And that's something else that just was released today. The transportation, the bus routes were placed on our website this morning.
Okay.
So that information is for parent, there for parents. So they can all start.
They post those in the paper too, don't they?
Yes, they do. And I believe that'll be this week.
This week?
Yeah.
No? There was a, there was a, it was last week?
Were they around on Friday? Great.
Excellent.
That's great.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'd add to pickup and drop off is I think it's going to, I think it's going to be exciting in terms of that morning piece of, I think there's a chance Route 58 won't get packed up. It's a chance, there might be a little backlog there, but bottom line, it's just a lot larger queuing area.
Yeah.
And I think even the community who isn't sending kids to school might be excited about that.
That was honestly a big discussion in the building committee though. We talked a lot about that, making sure that we gave that room.
Right, right.
Right, because, you know, there were a lot of times from eight to eighteen, fifty-eight would get pretty backed up during drop off.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that won't happen. It definitely won't happen to the same extent, and hopefully, it won't happen at all.
That's, that parking, staff parking and visitor parking, that's also, that's very exciting for folks because that's a lot more parking space than we've had before. That's a hundred and ninety-seven parking spots.
And without, just without the buildings there, it's time to get a real sense of what the entrance is going to look like. And you get that different feel without having the buildings there.
Okay, can I say one more thing?
That wasn't on the agenda, so Ruby can say one more thing.
Just one more thing, I just want to reach out to the National EMS across the street. They've been great in terms of just, just helping us out and allowing us to park there whenever, whenever we need, especially this last couple of weeks when we've had all of the construction and our teachers have been coming in.
It has a lot of cars in this morning, huh?
Right, yes, they've been, they've been very helpful, very supportive. And, and my sense is they'll continue to be because even for events, those one hundred and ninety-seven parking spots still won't be enough.
Right.
Yep. And so I think Ruby, you're staying anyhow for our next presentation. So our next presentation is going to be from Ruby and Paula Foley, and I believe Meredith is part of it as well.
And Ms. Dawson also.
Oh, and Ms. Dawson as well. Well, so as part of the Safe and Supportive School Grant, which we talked about last year as a committee, we've developed both a district-wide and elementary school action plan. That's how we're going to implement pieces from the grant. The district plan really is an outgrowth of the elementary plan. So we're going to really, the focus of tonight's presentation is going to be what's happening at the elementary school in terms of the Safe and Supportive School Grants and the plan going forward into this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ruby, Paula, Tanya, and Meredith.
Okay, so as you are all aware, we applied for the, the grant from the DESE several months ago. It was actually Ms. Dawson and Ms. Foley who worked together with Ms. Cargill to apply for the grant. It's a ten thousand dollar grant. In a nutshell, what it was, what it provided us with was money so that the teachers or we would have select staff that was, that were willing to be on the team, meet after school to work together to really take a real close look at our practices in the school and to determine how we could improve in terms of being a safe and supportive school environment. And not just safe and supportive in the, in the way of, of security, but really reaching out to our kids with regard to mental health issues, social-emotional learning, all of those pieces. So the team worked very hard from January to May to gather information from our parents, from our staff, from our, all of the teachers, and then put together our priorities. So what Ms. Dawson, Ms. Foley, and myself will be going over briefly with you tonight are the priorities that the team came up with in our action plan. So we'll start with the first one.
So the first one was professional development and academic and non-academic. The, it's not up there, but the vision for that is to create a multi-tiered intervention program to improve students' social-emotional skills, interpersonal relationships with peers, and adults, and academic growth. So in order to meet that vision, these are the steps that we came up with. Actually, in May of two thousand and eighteen, we conducted a needs assessment with the staff regarding social-emotional learning, their understanding of it, the tools that they were using in the classroom, what they felt their needs were going forward in order to provide a better learning environment for students. After we did that, we decided that we needed to provide professional development in responsive classroom, which is a program that we do use in our school, to expand the number of staff that were trained by the responsive classroom team. And that's something that we're planning on offering at the beginning of this school year. We also want to research and select a tier-two program. We are looking, currently, we're looking at two, but we're not limited to those two at this point. One is Zones of Regulation and the other is Social Skills Improvement System. And what we are planning on doing is having representatives from those companies come in and present to the subcommittee that is looking at these programs. We also wanted to, after, after, of course, we choose something, purchase and provide the tier-two, for the tier-two program, provide PD for that. We also want to create and refine, and refine some referral criteria for that tier-two intervention. So when does a student get referred to tier-two? How is, how does that happen? So we wanted to look at creating a system for doing that and then having the school adjustment staff present to the, the staff at large on how that happens. We also want to establish intervention blocks. We have intervention for math, we have intervention for reading, but we also wanted to establish intervention blocks for social-emotional learning so that we can reach a larger population. I know that our school adjustment staff is very excited about this, especially where we have some of those gathering areas. In the old school, they basically had their small offices to work within, and now they have these larger spaces. So they're very excited about being able to do that. And that's something that they're going to be working on this year. We also want the counseling staff to present to the, the staff at large the referral criteria that they've come up with and offer continued to support for the teachers in the classroom. So they're doing some, they might be doing something outside of the classroom in terms of the, the intervention blocks, but we want to make sure that that carries over into the classroom. So there's a common language, there's a, a common system for dealing with certain issues. We also have data meetings in math and writing and reading. We also wanted to add data meetings for social-emotional learning as well. And hopefully, if we put all that in place, we will be a safer and more supportive school.
Thank you.
Thank you. My area was policies, procedures, and protocols. And our vision that we created was to revise current policies and procedures, to outline procedures that establish a safe, supportive, and nurturing school environment for all staff and for all students. And our action steps were to research the codes of conduct of various elementary schools, revert, review the Carver Elementary, um, School's current code of conduct, review the PBIS mission statement and the code of conduct for alignment, research and align restorative justice practices with, um, Carver Elementary's code of conduct, all of which, um, we did this past school year. And this school year, we are planning to survey and discuss with teachers their top two priorities in regards to discipline. Create a parent information night brochure that articulates discipline related to topics such as the code of conduct, restorative ju- justice, and confidentiality. Create a behavioral support teacher toolkit. Revise the Carver Elementary Code of Conduct, which.
Which is, which is out for review this evening.
Which is up for review this evening.
So the, some of the handbook changes later, presented later on are tied to the work done through the Safe and Supportive School Grant.
So the, the last priority area that the team came up with, um, and we actually did have two parents on our, on our team. We had, um, teachers, paraprofessionals. We had, um, a couple of community members from the community. Um, it, it was actually Eric Germaine and Freddie Mello were, they were also on our team and, as well as parents. So, one of the, the third priority area was collaboration with families. Well, because what we're really trying to do is, is build on that partnership. We really want our families to feel like, um, they're a true partner in their child's education. So our, our vision, the team came up with the vision of cultivating a unified family, school, and community partnership. What we did is we conducted a needs assessment in May. We sent surveys out to all of our parents. And from that information, um, what we heard from our parents is they want to have more, um, events at the elementary school. I, it, um, they said that they really enjoy things like game night, but they would like us to add, um, you know, something that the whole family can come to and just be there together. So what we're gonna do is, um, look at a movie night. Uh, they also, the team also felt that creating a welcome area at the front foyer of the new school, including, um, brochures and information for parents, lending library, um, just material on cultural sensitivity, mental health awareness, and tying all of those things in, but having them easily accessible for our parents when they come into the new school. We also want to continue to partner with, um, our programs like the Y-PAC, uh, so they're going to work with us at Open House to provide refreshments, um, and, and again, just making it very comfortable and relaxed for our parents when they are at school on our, on the campus. We also are going, are working on a parenting, um, mini-workshop in collaboration with the South Shore Family Network, which will be starting probably in October. We're looking at having, um, these after-school classes, um, for parents, probably around three-thirty or four, and we'd be able to come up with childcare to help, um, support parents with that. Um, we, as I mentioned, we're going to add an additional family and community night and we're going to work on that. It'll be a movie night. And then we are going to continue our Health and Wellness Fair. We received a lot of very positive feedback on that. And this year, we're going to actually hold the Wellness Fair on the same day as, um, parent-teacher conferences in October. And, and again, it's because we want to have information readily accessible for when our parents are already coming to the school. And then the team, uh, that was comprised of a parent and three of the teachers, came up with a, a slogan that they really felt would be important for our families. And we're gonna have that on posters and, uh, throughout the school. The, so the slogan is "We Are Better Together." Our families, we know, are at the core of the work that we do with our children every day. And so we feel that the objectives outlined in our action plan are, are really designed to cultivate that partnership. So we feel very excited about this. And then Meredith's been working with the district team, um, to help to support this action plan.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, um, remind folks, when we presented on this grant and on this work last time, we talked a little bit about the requirement to complete something called the, the BHPS framework tool, which was a needs assessment broken down in a variety of different components and avenues. And the work of the elementary group to stay after school and work on these things, really were able to come up with a priority list. So the district committee, that was comprised of Stephanie as the school committee representative, so thank you, Stephanie, and myself, and our district, um, director of literacy and ELL coordinator, Michelle Taylor, and director of special education, Karen Tygart, met and reviewed the quantitative results of that framework. And from there, we, um, looked at the building-based action plan and tried to figure out how we could support the action plan and also backfill any area that we felt we could provide support to. So from that, our primary aim is to support the building-based plan through district leadership. And then, um, I'm going to ask for support from Mrs. Foley again, but we'll be writing, um, a grant that is considered phase two of the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, which should allow us to carry out. Some of the work is delineated by the elementary administrative team. Additionally, this summer, we, um, started the first step as a district in looking at our discipline data. And Karen did a nice job of overseeing some of that work and the ideas from that. We're going to lead into more defined antecedents of what tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three discipline looks like in each building. We also found that there was a need to compile a resource list of what community health offers, um, our district and what opportunities there are to connect parents in need with community health resources. So Karen will be working to, um, complete and publish that list and we can present that to staff. And then, as mentioned, during our setup for our data team meetings that we have a few times during the year, we're gonna add a component of SEL and help oversee that piece. And then lastly, in October, the faculty meetings in each building will be dedicated to social emotional learning and we'll be unveiling, um, a new professional development opportunity, a resource site for teachers so that they can go in at different grade levels and be able to find support around kind of the hot-button SEL issues that they may be experiencing in their classroom. Any questions?
That's in, that's in development, that website?
Yeah, it's mostly done. So we just have a vetting process, but there's been, um, an independent team from this group, some of whom sat on the Building-Based Safe and Supportive Schools, um, committee, but some who haven't, and it's more district-wide, who have, um, helped provide the copy and the resources for that site. And then I'll present on that at some point. So.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say thank you for all the work you put in, ladies. It's awesome. To get a grant like that and then to be so productive with, with what to do with it. It's fantastic. Thank you very much for all your time.
It is, thank you.
And all, and all of those involved.
Andrew, anyone else have any questions at all, or?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna have to grasp all of it first, I think.
Sure.
And then, uh, I'll probably email you guys, 'cause I had a lot of questions. I didn't really understand a lot of it, truthfully, so I was just, um, is the action, is the plan in place for the kids that would fall into the category of needing the support? Or is the plan in place for everyone that would then get a feeling of what that person is feeling? I, I was trying to, by the pamphlets and, and that kinda thing, and it seemed like the, the nights and that kinda thing, were you encompassing everyone or were you encompassing the people that needed, uh, social emotional support?
It's for everyone.
Okay.
And, but can you make it, it might be helpful if you made a distinction, 'cause you re- started referencing tier-two supports and that general concept of tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, what does that mean? What is that? And what might that look like in this? So I think that might be a question that some people in the community may have, 'cause they may not use that language all the time.
Right, right. So, so what we're looking at, um, there are five components in the social emotional learning sort of, um, um, focus area. One of them, let's just say, is self-regulation. Another one is relationship skills. So we're gonna be working with all of our students on all of those five skill sets. However, if there are students who are really struggling with one or more of those and they need additional support, that intervention support, these data teams that we're talking about here will be able to say, "Oh, okay, um, this child is really struggling with relationship skills. We need, uh, additional support. He or she will work with the counselor in tier-two support on those relationship-building skills," because they need, again, more direct instruction. So that's more of that tier-two.
So if you took ten kids and one would fall into that tier-one category and the other nine don't, the, the other nine are then, uh, taught in a way to, so they understand what the one is dealing with?
And that's part of, so, that's part of what responsive classroom, that the training that we're, we're going to have next week, that will give our teachers some more skills in how to support students with, um, building community, understanding each other, getting to know, um, another child's weaknesses and how to, how to support them. So the training will give our general ed, all the teachers, more skill in managing that. And then the tier-two support will be the counselors, um, or other support staff.
Okay.
To help those students.
And gen, and this is very, this is big on a big-picture Phil Sockville concept. Eighty percent of your students are tier-one. They only, they just get the same support somebody else gets.
Yeah.
And then maybe ten to fifteen percent of your students may need some tier-two supports. And then you have, there's a five percent that needs tier-three, uh, which is a higher level of support. So tier-one, everyone receives. Tier-two, it's based on, tier-two and three are based on need.
Okay.
And, and, uh, so I don't know if that, I don't know if that's helpful.
Yeah, it does. I'm, I was just trying to understand the concept.
Yeah.
Some of the terms, I, I don't use on the deal.
And, and Andy, the, the, the program that we're using for tier-one for all of the students is that responsive classroom. And then Mrs. Foley had mentioned Zones of Regulation and, and another social emotional program that we're investigating right now. We're looking into that because that will be what our counselors work on with tier-two students.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
It sounds, it sounds like what you were bringing up, you working with the kids and helping them understand someone else who might be different, another child might be different, actually goes right to the, help, help combat the bullying issue as well. You know, so that would, uh, I think that's, that's helpful right there, I believe. I'm actually looking forward to having further updates as you develop this. Um, I, I take it right now that with the, the interventions you were talking about for social emotional learning interventions, the thresholds haven't been set yet? Is that something you're gonna do with your team?
It hasn't been set yet, you're right. We're gonna be working on that. Yeah.
And is that, will that be, uh, you know, kind of a official threshold policy or just a, by, by the child, by the?
That's a good question.
It is a very good question. And, and I don't think it's black and white.
Right.
So, um, you know, you might start out with sort of a, a, a list of criteria, but it's gonna be something that's constantly revisited. It's gonna depend on the child, the incident, what happens, you know, um, what their.
You might have a list of criteria, but one student may exhibit one of those things on that list all the time, but not really the rest of them, but that may qualify them.
Exactly.
Whereas someone else, another student might sometimes exhibit many of the things on the list and that may qualify it.
So it'd be interesting.
So it is, it is individual, looking at the individual student and how they're responding to social situations.
So it'll be interesting to see what you come up with for this and your procedure. Maybe, if, I don't know.
We could definitely do an update on this.
James, or maybe we could have like a, a presentation, just an overview of social emotional learning for us who didn't grow up with this. You know what I mean? That are now being thrust into it with the new educational atmosphere in the state and in the country.
We've been working with, uh, a gentleman from, um, I forget the name of the organization that he works for, but.
Trauma-sensitive schools.
Okay. So, um, we've been working with him over the past year and, and, um, he's just a wealth of information. Um, I don't know if that's something that, you know, we can arrange, but, uh, he's come to speak with us quite a few times on this issue.
Well, thank you.
He actually wrote, um, he actually helped, collaborated with, um, a few other, um, PhDs from Harvard to write the trauma-sensitive schools. It's, um, it's a book that's, was published a few years ago and they actually just finished the second volume and they're working on another section of that. So he's been consulting with us over, since we acquired the grant, just to ensure, just to keep us on track, because it's a lot of information and we just wanted to really ensure that we were, um, using, that we were really maximizing our time, that we were really looking at the, at the priorities and that we were as inclusive as possible in the entire process. So it, um, we're very, we're, it's an involved, um, format and we're learning a lot about it as we go. And he's actually given us, um, other schools that we can go to visit to look at their models and gather more information because in, s- a lot of times it, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, you know?
Right.
I, I just said, Stephanie, do you have some?
So this is definitely, we could, something we can follow up on.
Yeah. No, my, my question's actually maybe from Meredith. I, I think you ladies are doing fantastic with it. Um, is this grant continuing? Is this, like, didn't we have goals that we had to reach in order for it to continue or?
Um, there was definitely an evaluation that we have to do for it and there is, um, it was a planning grant, so we had to complete that framework, which these ladies oversaw in terms of making sure that the committee, um, assigned a numerical value to our priorities.
Right.
And after that, there is a phase-two for implementation. So that's what we're gonna apply for this fall. The RFP hasn't been posted yet.
Okay.
But, um, we wanted to make sure, as Mrs. Foley made sure, that I was cautious with how we wrote our district plan, that we were supportive, but that we were not providing funds, because we wanted to make sure that we were able.
Get the funding.
Right, that we were able to access that. And really, this isn't above and beyond that we wanna be able to provide for students. So it falls outside of the realm of an operating budget and that sort of thing. But it is a priority in the sense that when you ask, you know, "Does it include all students?" We want everyone to feel safe and secure through a variety of different mechanisms. So we believe that it's a paramount need and we wanna make sure that the grant money is dedicated to carrying this work out.
So my second question may be answered in what your next presentation is, and I think it'll kinda hit what Andy was, was talking about. And actually, Andrew, um, the PBIS and the, and the responsive classroom, you, you had mentioned there's gonna be some stuff in the beginning of the year. I hate to use the word, 'cause it sounds bad, but is that like a mandatory training? Is that something everybody has to do or is it a choice?
Everyone's doing, everyone's doing the responsive classroom. Everyone is doing a.
At the elementary.
At the elementary school.
At the elementary school.
Yeah, right.
'Cause I think to the point, Andy, that, it, it's, it's very prevalent today and, I think to your point, it's a, that the plan that they're making encompasses everybody. It's not just focused on individuals. It's sort of open-ended, which is why I think it'll have to be adaptive, as you're saying, to what the situation is. But, uh, it's an excellent plan. And again, I appreciate all your work on it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, uh, James, you could segue right into our next topic, which is, uh, professional development.
Professional development.
So Meredith's gonna kinda give us an overview of, uh, professional development, beginning of the year and, and how some of that was selected. So as many people know, we shifted our professional development days to support the opening of the new building. Uh, teachers will have three full days of PD on August twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. Uh, August twenty-seventh, we'll have our traditional, um, opening of school, uh, in terms of, so I'll do an opening and members of the school committee will welcome to join us if they're able to at eight o'clock in the morning. Um, and then we're gonna do that at the, right now, the plan is to do that at the new elementary school. Uh, hopefully the parking will support us being able to do that, uh, and that'll be the kickoff. Uh, and then, so obviously, given those three full days up front, uh, give us an extra week in the schedule in terms of trying to get the building completed, which obviously we needed. Uh, so that ended up being a good decision. Uh, and I think this is something we'll evaluate. You know, we'll, we'll talk to teachers, we'll really get teachers' feedback and see what they thought about having, uh, all the professional development front-loaded. Uh, because after, after that, there's gonna be a full PD day on Election Day, which is Teacher Choice Day, which is November sixth. Uh, and after that, we're, that's where all, all our full-day PD days are. Uh, so we'll get some feedback and see if people like this structure. We'll get some feedback from families if they're. We'll get some feedback from families if they like the concept of going back after Labor Day and starting on September fourth. Because ultimately, it really doesn't change the.
End.
The end. It's just where we put the days. So we'll get that feedback on that. And Meredith's just going to give us a, a general overview of professional development for the upcoming year. So, thank you, Meredith.
You're welcome. So, this presentation is meant to synthesize the work of the Carver Professional Development Committee, which is a fourteen-member committee comprised of representatives from most of the departments at the middle, high school, math, science, history, English, language, arts, special education, and then representatives from the elementary school as well as some administrators who sit on that. So, a rep from each building. And the idea behind it is we are asked by the state to annually poll teachers and to figure out where their needs are in terms of priorities. And I just wanted to start off with a little bit of context around this. So, as you remember from last year and from multiple conversations that we've had, that the Carver Educational Blueprint is really the work that we do on a day-to-day basis, whether it be in the classroom, supporting students, or at the building level, supporting teachers and students, or district-wide. And the idea is to carry out and then align our work consistently to the four objectives. So, supporting safe schools, engaging the community, enhancing teaching and learning, and then leveraging leadership policy and funding, with the notion that carrying out work related to these four areas will help drive improvement within our district. And as we just saw with the Safe and Supportive School Grant, there's a direct alignment between that work and our first objective in the blueprint. So, much of the work that we ask about in terms of this needs assessment hovers in the first and third objective here, but sometimes there are aspects in terms of engaging the community or the last piece around leadership policy and funding. Also, as a reminder, we look at student data, things like the MCAS assessment, iReady, in some cases, student feedback involving Safe and Supportive Schools, but whatever the data may be, we look at it and from there, develop instructional priorities, offer professional development implemented in the classroom, and then reassess to see whether or not it's working with the overall aim of increased student achievement, or increased student belonging, or an increase in social emotional learning. So those are kind of the drivers when it comes to developing the instrument. The Professional Development Committee does develop the format of how we poll teachers. This year, we had eighty-five respondents, thirty-nine at the elementary, forty-two at the middle high school, and four district-wide therapists responded. In terms of the needs assessment, we also really wanted to look at some of the big-ticket items that are coming down from the Department of Education, such as the fact that a lot of our frameworks have changed or have been revised in the past three years. So all of our four core content areas have changed in addition to the addition of district, I'm sorry, digital literacy and computer science. So, three years ago, at the beginning of two thousand sixteen, it was new science, tech, and engineering frameworks. Last year, math and ELA. And then they just, the Board of Education just approved in June the adoption of the revised history and social science frameworks. So teachers feel that and obviously request professional development in their content area based on these shifts. We also realized that last year, technology was the top request, but technology's broad and we're all in different places with that, so we wanted to really drill down and get some more specificity for how we could support teachers. And we also wanted to delineate the results by campus because each building has unique needs in responding to the developmental needs of pre-K through five and then middle and high school. And we also wanted to make sure that we continue to include an opportunity for open response so teachers could write anything that we were unable to capture in our direct poll. So one of the questions that we ask is, what is the primary reason that you access professional development? And the majority of teachers say that their number one reason is to explore new and effective instructional strategies. And we always ask this question, but I like to reflect on that because I feel like our teaching staff here is remarkable in the sense that almost every discussion that I engage in with teachers in both buildings is around, how can I be more effective? How can I support my learners? And that's really what this question is about. The majority of them are trying to be as effective as possible when it comes to teaching. So, in regards to technology, you will notice that our top five areas at the middle high school, some of them are tied, is now that we've had Chromebooks for a while and this year we'll be fully one-to-one in grades six through twelve, is how do we effectively manage the classroom in that environment and make sure that when students have their screens up and they're working, that they're working on what we ask them to work on? Our second highest request is how to integrate technology for dynamic research and application. And then you can see beyond that, personalized learning, moving up the SAMR model, so getting more in-depth with how we integrate technology, moving towards how to do more hands-on creation in the classroom with Makerspace. And then the last piece is managing teacher workflow. So out of all the options provided, these were the top five that were requested by the middle high school. At the elementary level, where we're now going to be inheriting a new technological environment with the opening of the new school, the top request is what apps relate to my content area and how to use Google Drive? And then looking at a Makerspace, particularly with all those project areas that are beautiful and making good use of that, operational tech features, and then a three-way tie for fourth place, looking at classrooms of the future, Google classrooms and classroom management strategies. And then the last piece is increasing tech integration through the SAMR model. So those were our tech requests. In terms of other professional development unrelated to technology, the top need at the middle high school was around social emotional learning, which is exactly what we were talking about a moment ago. And then from there, content-specific PD and working in teams that are directed by teachers, twenty-first century learning skills, the new and effective instructional strategies, and then project-based learning and executive functioning, which is really helping students to tackle larger projects and manage their time and initiate that work. And then at the elementary level, again, the number one request was social and emotional learning, and then content-specific professional development, new and effective instructional strategies, project-based learning, collaboration, writing, and then supporting students with learning differences. So the idea from there is that we take those needs and structure our professional development days accordingly to support the implementation of our blueprint objectives and the requests from teachers. So we noticed that there is a lot of overlap, a lot of alignment between what teachers are asking for and carrying out that work. So for this year, we obviously, as Scott explained, we have the front-loaded structure to support the opening of the new school. So the idea for those three days is listed here at the elementary school. You were just asking about responsive classroom. So that will be covered as well as a lot of training on how to use the new building, from how to use the projector or the Chromebook or the laptops to fire drills, or how to use the building accordingly. At the middle high school, they're still fleshing this out. The department chairs are meeting this week to look at this, but Mrs. Holly isn't here tonight. They'll, she wrote me and said that they'll be working on curriculum work in an effort to get ready for NEASC, and then they'll be working on department work. Additionally, every year by contract, we have a Teacher Choice Day. The Professional Development Committee vets the proposals from teachers and it's typically held in January. This year, it's held November sixth, so it's an expedited timeframe. They'll be working on those proposals shortly. And then beyond that, we have an early release day, I believe, just about every month. But, as you can see from this example, from the elementary school, a lot of those are committed to perennial activities such as parent-teacher conferences, or educator evidence, or articulation meetings. So it really leaves the building three discretionary days, one being the Teacher Choice Day, and again, that's held to the teachers, and then two early release days. So, the, in looking at that, the elementary plan for this year is to have an early release day devoted to social and emotional learning, which aligns with the ed blueprint and the Professional Development Committee priority areas. And then in February, to talk about where we are with finding a math textbook that aligns or working on math curriculum. So we do ask the questions, does this help us move forward to meeting these objectives and action steps? And does that alignment support our work for improvement? So that is just a brief overview. That's where we're headed for the year and I would love to answer any questions you may have.
Andy? Mary? On, when you, when you finish these, do they give you evaluations, do the teachers that, that take part in, in any of this learning, do they give evaluations on, I don't want to say, was it worth their time, but did they get everything they were hoping out of it? Did that happen?
So the Professional Development Committee doesn't administer a district-wide evaluation, but oftentimes, the presenter does. For example, last year, I ran an eight-session after-school experience for the elementary teachers on technology integration and they got a Chromebook and there were different things that they could do with that. So as a presenter, I provided an evaluation to them, just asking them to anon, anonymously tell me what worked, what didn't work, how can I improve it? So when I offered it again in the spring, I get that feedback. Likewise, we had a presenter at the elementary school who came in last year talking about executive functioning and asked Ruby to hand out an evaluation in terms of, you know, was the presenter effective? So I would say it's pretty commonplace for, for presenters to do that, but that would be a good component for the PDC to build in, in the future.
And when they instituted in their, oh, I'm sorry, guys. When they, when they institute what they're, what they're learning, are they able to reach out to someone or to make sure that they're, and I don't want to say doing it correctly, but if they had any questions, once that day is over, do they have anyone to be able to reach back to?
Yes. Whether it's formal or not really depends on the circumstance. So, there have been times in the seven years that I've been here where we have had someone come in and present from a remote or an independent agency. So maybe it was from Cast or, or we'd have a presenter come in. In those cases, they, the presenter sometimes opens up their email and says, you know, let me know if you have any questions. Additionally, there are oftentimes key players in the building that can help support that. For example, when we talk about universal design, folks know that they can reach out to Karen for that. When we talk about tech integration, myself or at the middle high school, the members of the technology committee are oftentimes available to be able to support teachers and answer those pieces. In regards to responsive classroom, we have some key teachers at the elementary school who went off and were trained and they form a little committee and the staff is very aware of who those folks are. So when they had initial training on responsive classroom, they could go and seek out support that way. The one other thing that I didn't capture here that is very noteworthy is Kelly Dolan at the elementary level and Paula Shaw at the middle high school level, under the leadership of Christine Cabral. The three of them work on the Required District Mentor Program. And when I say required, the DESC requires us to have a two-to-three-year mentoring program for induction into the profession. So for teachers that are brand-new to teaching, as well as those who may have taught elsewhere and come into the district. And under that program, each teacher that is new is assigned a specific mentor and they develop an amazing collegial relationship where they can go to each other. They are required to meet, but in, and, I guess, sorry, beyond that, it's a frequent resource for that teacher and oftentimes, there are good friendships that are born out of that because you can go and ask your mentor anything and it's confidential. So it can be, you know, what do I need to do for this? Or I just blew it today. I had such a hard time and I was less organized than normal. Can you help me support that? And it really provides this amazing reflection in being able to, to get support when you need it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Very much. Okay. Moving on to, yep, updates on track and field project. Meredith, there's a series of pictures in here. If you just pull those up, that'd be great. The track and field project's moving along on time and on budget with really minimal change orders. In your background, I gave everybody the agenda from a weekly meeting. Just wanted everybody to know that there is actually a weekly meeting for the project every Thursday, and that's attended by myself, Dave Seidenthal, Mike Schultz, John Woods, Brad. So we're meeting on a regular basis on the progress that we're, that's going forward with the, with the track. And really, our goal, right now, the substantial completion date for the project is October third. So it's, we still have six or seven weeks to go before we reach substantial completion. And hopefully, we won't run into any stumbling blocks along the way. You know, we're really, we're really past a lot of the, any stumbling blocks we have in the ground because as you're going to see in the pictures, we're above the ground. You know, so there's time to work above the ground now, so the site work's all done. A lot of the site work's done. So that's, that's helpful. You know, but you never know, you never know what's going to come forward. But if we meet our goal of substantial completion by October third, the goal is that every team will play at least one home game on, on the surface. You know, maybe more than that. So football, boys and girls soccer, field hockey, cross-country, that people will have the opportunity to use that field this fall. We're in the very beginning stages of plenty of opening, grand opening ceremony for the field as well. Preliminary stages means we've said that we needed to have a grand opening. So we'll have to take that, except what that's, what's that going to actually look like? You know, obviously sometime in October in terms of inviting the community out to the field and to see it. So.
We have some policy first readings on that tonight, too?
Uh, it's, field's tied to it. I mean, ultimately, it's really building use beyond the field. The field's part of that. But when we look at the, we will do a first reading on a policy tonight for building use that encompasses the field. Just wanted to throw some pictures of, you know, a general look of what the field's going to look like because it's hard for people to see, maybe if they come into the parking lot, you can look out there, but you can't really tell what's happening. You're going to get the sense the field is a lot wider because it's going to be the full-size soccer field that really has wide the field, plus the eight lanes on the straight for the track. And you can see that a little bit. So what's there, what you're seeing there in that picture, that's actually the, the track has been paved and then the football field is all set behind it. And they're going to actually start laying the turf soon. Probably, if you've go, if you went to the middle high school today, a lot of the materials for the tra, for the field, sorry, a lot of the materials for the field have actually are on-site and they're going to stop putting that down, putting the carpet down. So, it's going to go fast from here. Go ahead, Meredith, take a look. So just, I just went out there, these pictures were taken today, probably around twelve-thirty, noon. I just went out and said, this is, this is where we are. If you'll bring some pictures side of, this is exactly where we are. So, Meredith, you want to go back one picture?
Sorry.
Sorry, that's fine.
Got a little over.
Yeah, good. So there is going to be, you can see they're building the structures for retaining walls. It's going to go along the softball fields. So if you go out to the site now, you can see it's a little, it's a little shaky around the edges because they're still doing that work, but there's going to be retaining walls, new fences, all new fencing, all that. All that work is starting to go in. Meredith, take slide, go one forward. This is just a general overview of the football field, the posts. You can see the posts, obviously, field goal posts are up, the lights are up. Go ahead, Meredith, one more. And on the opposite side of the site, you get a sense here of, there's going to be two levels. So when you enter the site, you're going to break down into two levels. One level below is going to be able to go right along the track. It's hard to tell on that picture. I don't know if you can blow it up a little bit, Meredith? Down the bottom, go a little closer? Yeah. You can see the fence posts along the, oops. You can see the fence posts along the tracks. So see where the two orange cones are? That's the end of the track. That's the eight lanes of the track. And then there's a fence post along there. That's fine, Meredith. There's a, there's a fence, fence post along there that will obviously be fenced in area where people will be able to stand. So that will be open to the public. You can go down right on the track, right by the field. Then there's going to be stairwells up to kind of a second level. That's going to all be sod, so in between the two levels is going to be all grass. And then up above, you'll have your bleachers. We've roughed in everything for a potential concession stand in the future. So, there's a tight tank out there, there's plumbing, there's water. So we're set, if we're able to put a building on, to put a building there and the slabs laid for that building. And you can see where the, where the press blocks and bleachers are going to be up the top there on that pad. So it's, as you, as you enter the, that side of the facility, it's going to really split into two levels and allow those people to have the two levels. Obviously, it's designed so that the people at the lower level will not block the sightlines of the people at the upper level.
The potential concession stand, does that have a foundation, a base foundation?
It does. So, the concessions, everything, so we've put ourselves in a position to build, drop a building or build a building in the future for the concession stand. So there's water, electrical, and a tight tank for septic.
piped out there.
It's all out there. The tight tank's in the ground. It's all out there, the tight tanks in the ground, I mean, so we're, we're, we're ready to put a building on it.
Okay.
You know, obviously, if the contingency funding allows, there's some discussion of possibly adding the building, but where we are right now, it's probably, it's not looking great in terms of where we are in terms of contingency. So I think it might have to be a future project in terms of adding the building, but we're going to be in position to do that. And all I've done here from, if you go back one picture, Meredith, so all I did was turn around. So I just turned around, go, go forward now, Meredith, sorry. I, I just turned around and took the, that, it's hard to see it there, but that's the building in the back corner, and that's actually the bus loop. It's the, it's the beginning for the crushed dome for the bus loop. So that whole concept of, you know, we've, we've created this entrance into the complex, which is going to be, allow people to not be standing in the parking lot while they're waiting to buy tickets. It's going to allow us to not have the buses parked on the other side of the facility. So as you're leaving a Friday night football game, the, the team doesn't have to walk across the parking lot to the front of the, to the middle high school. So the bus loop's a huge, I think it's a nice addition. And that's going to be, you know, I said the site work was done, I really meant in terms of the digging piece, they have to do all that site work, but that's designed, it's going to have some benches, a nice flagpole, some nice trees. That's, I think that's going to be a nice entranceway into the field complex. It's hard to tell in that picture, but that's what that, that's the beginning structures of the bus loop. I think that's, and then there's just one more, just a general overview of the field. So just wanted to give you some updates and say that, you know, the wor, they've, it's been a hot summer for them. So when I go out and talk to the guys working out there, I'm always like, it's been a hot summer for you guys. But rain has not slowed them down at all, you know, so they've just, they've just been going at it, and they're really moving forward well on that, on that project. So I don't know if there's any questions in terms of where we stand as of right now for track and field.
You said there's, there are gates to keep vehicles off of there when it's not used?
There is, and, but it's also going to be, it's also going to be opened up so that, it's designed so it's wide enough so the ambulance can go down either side. This is all, we all exterior fencing. Any, any else? All right, very good.
No.
Moving on to the elementary school handbook?
Elementary school handbook. So this time, welcome, Mr. Dawson back. I was going to do a review of proposed elementary handbook changes. Which will tie back to our social, social emotional learning presentation a little bit.
So, hi. So just to start off that, you know, all dates and names have been changed, and we are just now Carver Elementary School. So that was one of the biggest changes I had to make for the book. And moving right along, if you don't mind, I'm going to just, I'm going to come back to the code of conduct because the other areas at the, that are on the bottom of that sheet are going to be a little bit quicker.
The, the code of conduct is more philosophical, and that's more, more philosophical discussion, not necessarily, not necessarily read through the whole changes.
Right, okay.
Or do the philosophy behind the changes.
So the, the subcommittee that worked on the policies and procedures also looked not just at the code of conduct, but we also looked at the language that was in the student handbook, and we looked at field trips, electronic devices. I think that was the major change, yes it was. So in the field, under field trips, we just added some language, which I did underline in the information that I sent. That Carver Elementary School views field trips as highly valuable and important educational experience. And Carver Elementary School prides itself in making multiple attempts to contact parents and guardians to obtain written consent. And field trip participation is based on the individual need of student. So that, those three statements were added. And under electronic advices, devices, we also added exceptions to bringing in phones will be considered, however, parents slash guardians must contact the office. We also added pickup patrol, which is a way for parents to notify the school online, through an app, to say that they're picking up their child at, at the end of the day, or at a different time during the day, which is very helpful, eliminates some phone calls to the front office.
How did that work last year, did that go over well?
I think it went over very well. Honestly, it, you know, like I did say, it eliminated some of the disruptions into the classroom to say, you know, please send Johnny down, it's time for dismissal, because we could email the teachers. A lot of parents have used it.
Good response, good.
So I don't know if we want to look at those three changes first before we talk about the whole big piece of the code of conduct change? So I don't know if there's any questions on field trip, electronic devices, or pickup patrol and the changes proposed for the handbook?
When you say exceptions to bringing in phones would be considered, what's an example of an exception?
I would, so I would say that it's going to, you know, be based on the individual needs of the family, and there are some children that do go home alone, and we ask that the child keeps their phone in their backpack, and that's where it stays for the day, but just to notify us, to make us aware that, you know, he, he or she does have the phone on them.
Sometimes medical.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep.
Sure.
I've never even checked this, how is cellphone service in the building?
It's not, it's not that great, because it's earlier.
Okay, not good.
Yeah.
In the new building, yeah.
It's a little spotty in areas.
It's on the bricks and everything, that's what I've been told. Every school I've been in is horrible, is that right?
Right.
It's very sketchy in certain areas.
So using the phone as a calculator is not an exception?
Not in elementary school.
Not today.
So you want?
Any questions at all?
No.
You good?
Okay, so it's just a little bit of, it's a little friendlier, and it's more of what we do. Like, we do reach out multiple times to ask, you know, for written consent on field trips, because we don't want kids to, to miss going on a field trip just because they don't have a signed permission slip. I do want to read you one statement from our, our plan that helped us write the code of conduct. So the plan that we will establish, the discipline policies that focus on reducing students' time away from the academic setting and balance accountability with an understanding of students' needs while creating a safe and supportive and nurturing environment. So we approach the code of conduct from a safe and supportive schools viewpoint. And in reality, that, not much has changed. We kind of just, we tightened it up, we made, I don't want to, I don't want to say the word exceptions, but what we did was we focused on the student, not all the students, so it's a blanket, one size fits all, but it's based on the needs of the student that is standing before us. So we want to make sure that we're meeting that student's needs, we're, you know, having fair and appropriate practices, and we're also having restorative justice, restorative practice, making sure that the student is making amends for, for the actions of their behavior. So we did come up with a mission statement, and then what students are expected to do. There, I think before there was about, I want to say, probably about fifteen to sixteen of what they were required to do. We really looked at those and created eight. And then for the overall rules of the school, we followed the PBIS model that has been established in the school for a number of years, and those are our general rules. And like I mentioned before, our code of conduct is based on an understanding of the student, fair and appropriate practice, restorative approach. And we believe that discipline is a shared responsibility, of mutual trust, and the intent for any corrective actions should be to enforce the code of conduct with integrity and respect. And it, before it was kind of black and white, if you did this, then this would happen. So now, the consequences may include processing the issue with staff members, a verbal warning, possible loss of privilege, verbal written apology, making amends. We kind of, like, gave a list of things that could be possible based on the student that's in front of you and based on the behavior. Do you have any questions?
Anyone? No?
No.
So far.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. So we would need a motion to approve the handbook.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes in the elementary handbook.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Clearly no comments or questions, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Meredith.
Thanks for all your work.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we have a couple requests to recycle some materials. The math department is looking to recycle outdated calculus textbooks, and the technology department is requesting several miscellaneous items to be disposed of. The request, the list of items is linked below, or linked in your drive. A vote is required on recycling and disposing these items. You know, as appropriate, they'll either be recycled or disposed, if recycle is possible. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve recycling the math calculus books and the technology items.
I'll make a motion to approve recycling and disposing of the math textbooks and technology department calculus, oh, calculus textbooks.
It's calculus textbooks and technology, miscellaneous technology items.
And random items from the technology department.
Which is listed, which is listed.
I would take a second on that.
Oh, a second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
Who was that seconded by yourself?
Andy.
Andy. Do, when we try to repurpose these or recycle these, do we offer these to any other departments in town? Before, are they usable for something like that?
Well, yes, because tech, remember, we have a townwide technology department now.
That's right.
So in terms, in terms of the calculus textbooks, I don't know if they were offered up to anybody. They may have been. But, but the technology items, obviously, that all goes through, Steven Mahoney is the director of technology in terms of supplying the list of items. Clearly, they're looking to see if they can reuse or repurpose items throughout the town. As, as we've talked about a little bit before, I do think that the townwide technology has really been a positive for the school district and for the community as a whole. So, yeah, so we are looking, within the town at least, to see if anybody else can use those items. And most of the things on the list are just outdated materials.
There were a few things from the elementary school that did go over to the town offices as well, we're clearing out, so.
Okay.
Excellent.
Well, the other thing I was thinking about, too, is maybe, this is a town issue, but you had Alan's gone, is the, seeing if the council on aging could use some of this stuff. I mean, the technology for some older people.
The stuff we're getting rid of is well past its useful life.
Is it?
Yeah. A lot of it's not working, and a lot of it is.
Yeah, more problems than not, when you take something like that on.
Can you get this thing to work?
Yeah.
The technology group is aware of the needs of the council on aging and has done some technology for that, but I agree, these are end-of-life tech items that can't be upgraded, or they're, they won't be able to do the virus protection and all that, so.
I did see an Apple IIe on the list. Sorry.
An Apple what? IIe, two, early.
That was before mice, you could only use arrows.
It's like nineteen eighty-four.
Should be in a museum.
All right, so moving on. Brad?
But, but, budget transfers. Eighteen and nineteen.
FY eighteen, we'll start with FY eighteen, there's really not much to discuss. A lot of the funds that got, are being transferred are from departments, so, for example, the, the, excuse me, the transportation department, what we were able to do was any savings I had, based on routes that got changed throughout the year, special ed, that was, it was up and down with where we were on that number. That money got transferred in, and we let the health department purchase rotors, and we got ahead of where we really need to be on supply, so it was nice to get ahead on that. Same thing with Dave and his facilities department, we did very, very minimal spending at the elementary. What we were able to do was we were able to actually roll that money into our district-wide extraordinary maintenance account, and we were able to purchase all the partitions for the restrooms at the middle high school. So those are being cleared out right now, and new ones are being put in. It's not a totally revamped bathroom, but it's a step in the right direction.
All the partitions, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent, that's like, makes me very happy.
And that was really it for FY eighteen, a lot of them, like I said, were interdepartmental, interdepartmental budget transfers, and a few of the things that we were able to do, saving-wise, on the elementary, middle high school account lines for supplies and materials, that got wrapped into technology needs in terms of signing long-term contracts for three years for a lot of our subscriptions. So that's how we spent that money as well. Any questions on, anything specific on here?
Make a motion to approve the transfers, the final budget transfers for FY eighteen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions for Brad? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And the only thing I want to add on there, too, is we were able to prepay one special ed tuition with this money we had at the end of the year. The, it's positive, but at the same time, the negative is we've been hit with a lot of special ed tuitions that were not part of FY nineteen budget, so it's going to help alleviate a portion of that cost, but we're still in the red in terms of FY nineteen as we stand.
Well, you got unanimous approval so far, man, so, let's see where you go next.
FY nineteen.
FY nineteen, and with that being said, also, this week, I got the report for FY eighteen for the end of year report, so hopefully we have a perfect end of year report again, but we'll see how that goes, no guarantees. FY nineteen, there are some specific lines I want to just call to attention, so if you guys have that open in Google Sheets. On line item. One seventy, Meredith, you can scroll down to one seventy. And it is the vocational. What's that?
Voc agi?
Yep, the Voc agi contract service transportation. On this line, what we did last year for this specific run is Plymouth has students that they send, and we were able to hop on with them. So that was the charge for two students last year. This year now, we have three students going, so the five thousand.
Eight forty.
Eight forty, yeah, you guys can't even see that here. That number is for three students now, so that just added on to the cost. Yeah, I need glasses here. This, this also, though, this line, you're going to see more movement on here, because what we're working on, actually, is we're restructuring our routes where the bus driver for vocational, you'll see on line one sixty-six right above it, the twenty-three, two ninety-five. I'm pretty sure that we're going to be able to hook up with another school district that sends to, the Bristol schools, and we'll be able to save money on that end, too, because we'll hook up with them, we'll meet them somewhere in Carver, our students will hop on their transportation vehicle, and they'll be on their way.
Awesome.
So again, it's just a matter of rooting it, that it works out for our drivers, and we're able to find someone that will sit in a seat, but it has been nice, and I want to thank Maureen for doing an excellent job in terms of looking at other districts that we can connect with, and it's a cost savings for everyone.
That's good.
Awesome.
On line one seventy-four, insurance for vehicles. When I got this bill, I didn't know what was going on, so I called Maya, and they actually changed their underwriting process for how they insure vehicles, and that came at an increased cost to us of seventy-five hundred dollars. But the good news on that is, when you go down to line two thirty-six, this is our insurance property and liability for our schools. The original amount, we, we jumped this up thirty thousand dollars last year. That was based on the proposed dollar amount increase from the elementary school, that'll almost thirty grand. What they did not do when they gave me that quote was they didn't drop the two existing buildings. So when you add that on, you add the new building on, take the two off, the actual is going to come in right around eighty-four thousand dollars. So that's a twenty thousand dollar swing right there that we have to the good that'll help offset some of the other costs, and I'll, I'll go over quickly here, too. One item on line two thirty is early retirement. What happens every year is, you'll see there was a journal entry for that in FY eighteen. DESI now makes you report any retirement costs that you have associated, so if you have a buyout on, if someone notifies you by January one that they're retiring at the end of the year, if it's in the contract, they want to see that broken out in a specific line, because they want to capture that cost. So what we've been doing in the past is we've been just journal entering in at the end of the year, but I want to break it out now early, so it's actually in a line item that we can charge to, and it saves us from having to journal entry at the end of the year, because it's going to be a cost that we know of. and it saves us from having to journal entry at the end of the year because it's going to be a cost that we know of. And, that was all I had.
Any questions?
No.
I guess we should.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY nineteen budget transfers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Andy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous? Thank you very much again, Brad.
Yep, thank you there.
All right, uh, policies. Uh, the policy subcommittee met in early August and approved, uh, the following two policies to be moved forward to the full committee for a first reading. Uh, so we'll do the first reading this evening, uh, so no action is needed tonight, just an opportunity for people to hear the possible policy changes and make some comments and have some thoughts. Uh, we'll come back on, uh, in September for a second reading where at that time, uh, we would move forward to have a motion for a vote, uh, either in support or not to support the proposed policy changes. Uh, the policy subcommittee is meeting again on Thursday, August thirtieth, uh, to discuss some additional policies that have, uh, come forward to the committee. Uh, so in September, we might have some other policies that come forward. The first one is, uh, policy dissemination. The revised policy is, is linked in, in your presentation. Uh, the intention of the revision is to make a clear statement that school committee policies will be made available to the public. We plan on digitizing the policy manual and having it available on the district website. Uh, that process has not officially begun yet, uh, but we're just about to start that. Uh, that's project Gina's going to be working on and her and I talked about it today, saying that there's a good chance that a, the good piece of that will be done for the September meeting. So, and then, the, what the policy subcommittee discussed was that, once the policies are up on the website, we might try to do some prioritization of them. Uh, in essence, you know, obviously the policy manual follows a very specific format, but we could do some things to highlight some policies that might be of particular interest to parents. Uh, because obviously, who know, who knows exactly what policy parents might have an interest in, and obviously the whole manual will be there. But there are some, there are some that we, I think we as a committee could take a look at and say, yeah, I think this is something that, uh, parents might be interested in knowing that they may not even know a policy exists on this topic, uh, and to see the policy and have it there.
Sort of like a reference sheet for you as a school committee memo and people are coming to you with questions, concerns. It's sort of a place where they can go to to not have to read a hundred-page document, but look for a quick reference to certain things. And I think part of what you're talking about with the online where it's going to be linked, right?
Yeah, so they'll be, they'll be, they'll be able to link right to the policy. Uh, so it'll be a listed, it'll be a list of all the policies, which they will be able to click on and link to the individual policy and read it. So, how we're changing the current policy is the proposal, and I have both the current and the proposed change. And basically the proposal is to remove language from the current policy, not add any. If you look at the second paragraph of the policy, it says, accessibility is, is to the, sorry, accessibility is to extended at least to all employees of the school system, to members of the committee, and insofar as conveniently possible to all persons in the community. A policy concerning a particular group or groups in the schools will be distributed to those groups prior to the policy's effective date. So, we want to remove that qualifier that says insofar as conveniently possible. And just say, uh, that accessibility to the policy manual will be made to, available to employees of the school system, members of the committee, and to all persons in the community. Uh, we had some discussion about actually putting in here that it's going to be available to all persons in the community via the website. And I cautioned against that a little bit, saying, you know, the vehicle of how we make it available to the community may change. And right now, the website might be the best way to do that, but who knows what three years from now, what might be the best way to do that. So I, I suggested we just leave it a broader statement that says, our policy is, this manual has to be available to all persons in the community. So the proposed change is to remove that language that says insofar as conveniently possible. Uh, otherwise, the policy is the same as, as it's currently stated. So I don't know if there's any thoughts on, on the current proposal, as I said, this is the first reading, it needs, they will come back to the committee in September for a second reading for the further discussion of, of motions.
So, on the next one though, I, I'd like to, you know, this was the first reading and this was a pretty big discussion we had when we were there that night of the meeting, but, uh, particularly you Andrew, because I think you're active in this field, but I would love when we come back for, that, that, you know, maybe we get some kind of input on this as much as we can as to about how people feel about this.
Yeah, and so Brad, Brad's going to take a look at the second policy, which is the proposal of the community use of school facilities. And Brad actually headed up a group of, um, of members of the, of the administration, um, teachers, and to look at this policy and say, what do we want to do in terms of changing some of our philosophies? So they designed and proposed the policy, which came, which we brought forward to the policy subcommittee. Uh, so Brad took the lead with that group. Uh, they actually met.
Multiple times.
Multiple times throughout the spring, really maybe even started last fall. Uh, so over the past year, knowing that we were going into a new facility, uh, this group has been working on, uh, designing this policy.
All right, and I apologize for the format as you go down, um, Gina had it in great format, and I was working on this up till seven. It's a little bit off. But the basis of this change is, there's a couple things and the biggest point, um, that I want to make with this change is, we were struggling with users of the building who, really, there's no fo- focused one-point person to look at, um, in terms of monitoring, doors being locked, and we were struggling with that. Um, and with the whole school shootings going on and everything, we really wanted to look at this and say, how can we make this work that our buildings are secure? Badges over the last couple of years have just been given out, they've been rotated around, um, between groups and we want to, we want to stop that and we want to make sure our buildings are as secure as possible, and with that, um, we want to make a proposal with the policy that there's always someone on staff that's, that school is hiring to cover, um, to be there as the point person, to make sure the facilities are secure. Um, it's, it's tough to look at outside organization and with, if they book it for the whole day, it's kind of in and out, there's back doors to get left open. Um, it's just, it's, it's difficult and for us to really pinpoint that on one person, it's, it's hard to do. But if we have a staff member on hand that's responsible for that, that's where we, that's where we're trying to go with this policy and make that, our buildings as secure as possible. One thing you'll see is the fees, and again, I don't know how much we want to get involved in this tonight, I think you guys want time to review all this and see what it is, so. Really, the, the major changes are, um, the, the fees, and the fee design is to have someone in the building at all times, like I said, that the school's hiring to be there, and they're going to be our point person to let the users into the building. Fee structure's totally changed, you'll see the weekday, um, for Carver youth and recreation and nonprofit is minimal, and that's because we have staff on hand. Um, custodians are in the building at that time, so they're our focal person, our point person on that. But on the weekends, um, we look to, again, have someone there that we're rolling into the fee. So that's where it kind of, the, the fees will jump up a little bit, and I know, I dealt with this in my last district, we had to change these and modify these fees. Um, and it's not this meeting that the parents come to, it's not the next meeting, it's actually when they sit down and they get the bill or the organization where this used to be free, now this is ten dollars, twenty dollars per hour, where do I come up with this? Um, but again, I think the point for us, we really need to sell is that this is about security. Um, and I just feel like we've, haven't done a great job of monitoring that building as much as we can. With opening up a new elementary school and really where we are climate-wise with schools and leaving them open, uh, we really need to have a point person that we can hold accountable for monitoring this, um, and this kind of rolls it all into one. So again, I don't know if you want to add on anything, Scott, or?
So the other thing I want to add just more procedurally, and Brad hit the key points. Procedurally, we have two policies that govern this. And the proposal actually would be to combine those two policies into one policy. So, in essence, there's policy KG and policy KGR. This would bring those two policies together under one policy. Uh, KG was the overall philosophy, KGR was the fee structure. We felt like it didn't, it didn't, that's, doesn't have to be different structures. Uh, there's no like legal requirement that they be separated, that was just how the policy manual developed. So we said it makes sense to put it into all into one policy, so this is actually going from two policies to one. And then I'll just reiterate, uh, really what Brad said, but just sort of re-emphasize that, you know, there's really four major changes in the proposed policy. Uh, you know, we're going to begin to charge local community groups a small fee for use of fields and building spaces. Um, second, we require that there always be a custodian, a security person present, um, and for, anytime you're using the building, including weekends. Um, we're going to no longer charge a separate fee for custodian security. It's all covered under the building use fee. Uh, and that's all part in, uh, played into it. And, and finally, obviously, the overall fee structure has changed. Um, inclusive, we have to take a look at the turf field as well. Uh, so the turf field's going to have an increased price to use that field, uh, to support that field. Uh, so it's really to the committee how much you, how much detail you want to go into this time in terms of the actual policy and fees.
And when we did the comparison, really, I kind of blended all the South Shore's, um, fee structures, I looked at those and, and tried to map it out as close as possible. Most of them are higher than ours, to be honest with you still. Um, but the one thing I want to mention on the turf field is, um, talking to town administrator, the replacement cost is supposed to be generated by the school department and our building use, our, our building use, but technically the field use. Um, so you'll see, for a weekday Carver youth, um, recreation, we're requesting a hundred dollars per hour to use that turf field. What that'll go is that'll get put aside in our revolving, um, building use facilities account, but that'll have its own earmarked dollar amount that that money, that's where that sits and that's where it grows to offset the replacement cost. Do I think we're going to have half a million, six hundred thousand dollars in ten years when we need to replace it? I don't think so. Um, maybe if we get a couple of groups that want to do long-term leases on it, if there's local soccer or whatever there may be, um, that that'll help offset that cost. But I do not think we're ever going to fully capture that whole five to six hundred thousand dollar cost when it's time to replace, so we'd be either looking at operating budget or the town maybe may use one-time money, um, could be free cash article, but that's our goal with this.
But I think if there's, if we begin to build up that base of money, uh, the town would be appreciative of that, instead of just coming back and saying,
Your six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we need to replace the track and field.
Absolutely.
And we don't necessarily have any, uh, funding to help support that process.
Yeah. And we felt, again, locally looking around, a hundred dollars is right around the going rate for what they're charging local youth.
So really, I'll turn it back to the committee and say, you know, you can ask more in-depth questions now, you can take a look at the fee structure, you can think about it and try to get some input as we come back to this September meeting, uh, and I think.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Stephanie.
I do have one question. Do we ever require, um, details for any types of events that happen on?
We do, we.
Federal school hours?
We do. Uh, so that's the individual choice of the person running and managing that event. Obviously, we have discussions about it, uh, and, you know, so sometimes people will say to me, do I need a detail for that event and we'll have that discussion. Uh, generally, places we do it is football games, um, basketball games, uh, they generally have a detail. Dances sometimes, depending on what the dance is, uh, but, you know, we haven't done it for. Uh, but places I think maybe we could is, uh, for example, the dance studios. You know, when the dance studios use the building, there might be a value to having a detail to help control parking and those types of things, and that's a cost we could put on to any group, whatever group that's using it.
Right. I just wasn't sure, is it, is it in, is it written in anything or is that just?
I do not believe it's formally in the policy saying that requires, require a detail for any specific.
The current policy, I don't believe.
Right.
But in the proposed, I believe that's in there.
There is, I saw something.
Yeah.
Yeah, number six.
Six, yep.
This is maybe.
Police officers may be required to be present at public gatherings on school property. Arranged for this protection should be made in advance by the renter directly with the Carver Police Department.
I scrolled too fast, thank you.
Brad, in each building, who has the title of the building use coordinator?
That would be Paula Foley.
Paula Foley.
And Mark, Mark Suze's replacement.
Okay.
Mike Schultz fills in a little bit too with the, um, outdoor activities.
Okay.
And there'd be a change from the overall, uh, what's the exact title here? The building use coordinator, the overall would go from Dave to me.
To Brad, so Brad's taking that role.
Uh, turf field rental price, does that include security slash, uh, guard or, or cleanup person?
Yes, but really what that's going to include is for the hundred dollars, we really, we toyed around with that. Um, what that's going to do is going to, for someone will be on site, whether they're outside or they're, a custodian is still inside, but they're on duty if there is an issue. That's what we're looking at. So there wouldn't be someone directly outside, let's say, but there would be someone on site.
Well, and why, and why I mention that is, is it the person who is renting the facilities? Who, who is monitoring what they're bringing out, you know, if they're bringing cokes or what they're bringing out, because on the turf, you can't bring that stuff, I mean, it's, it's water only, I believe. So is that, you know, if you rent it, you rent it out to?
I thought that was the school committee's job description, so are you trying to, uh, take that one over?
Show up for those.
Um, no.
I'm just curious, like, is that?
We're going to have to work that out, to be honest with you, it's, it's not set in stone, um, but there, the goal of this, again, is to, really, people need to monitor themselves. That's like our number one thing, and if there is an issue.
Uh, that's not good enough.
We can follow up on it.
No, that won't be good enough. I'm just telling you, because if you rent it to somebody and you rent it to Liverpool and they come in and use it, that coach is not watching what parents are bringing out, their co- coffees in the morning, spilling them, nah. So I'm just saying, that, that, that won't fly, you'll have to, we'll have to figure out something. Because just saying that those people monitor it themselves won't happen, that place will, I'm, that's just being honest.
Does the insurance say have to have covered the damage to the facility or does it only cover?
I don't think so.
No, it's only personal injury.
Um, lights, so is that something that, and I don't know this, as far as like, can, can you, you be in your office and turn those lights on or is that?
Yeah, you can do them from.
Nice.
Yep, you can set them up on certain hours too.
That's great, all right, that's awesome, thank you.
Which will help us control the, um, two-hour windows, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, that's, that's really good, I did not know that. No, I love the, the initial layout, I think that's, that's great, um, it'll, it'll certainly give everybody, uh, some ground rules as far as, you know, how to get started, the tennis courts.
It's, it was on the old one, I.
Okay.
Again.
We're not going to be stopping kids on the weekend from going to hit.
Exactly, and you're not going to stop community use from going there and using it, so, again, I just rolled that over from the old policy.
And I think, I think the thought on the tennis courts was, which does occasionally happen, is, yeah, if someone's going to run a camp.
Right.
Or if they're going to run a clinic.
So.
So if there's someone, if someone's looking, right, someone's using the courts for profit.
Yep.
They should be charged a fee.
Makes sense. And my last one, because I know this is like a work in progress, would be, um, community use of the track and field as far as people want to walk. Is there going to be designated times where it'll be open to the public?
No, so we, we were pretty clear, in my opinion, that, that, the track would be accessible to people. That they, they, that, that we.
That's why I was just asking.
I was saying, I'm sorry, through, through the building, when we built, when we proposed the plan itself, we said this is a community field.
Exactly.
That people, that people be able to access the track and walk the track. I mean, does that mean it's going to, yeah, is that, yeah, does that mean it's going to be open at, uh, three in the morning for people to walk the track?
Right, but there should be, there should be, there should be clarity to that.
Would it be designated times where it'll be like community walk hours and you say it's eight to ten in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays and it's, I don't know, four to six? I'm just throwing that out there.
Oh, I, that's legit.
Because you're going to need, you know, somebody to open and shut the gates, and you're going to need somebody to make sure that they're not, you know, running rampant on the, you're going to have to have some security, somebody's going to have to be there. So I was just asking if that's in the plans, because it is a community, uh, place.
Goes back to that self-monitoring though, I mean, if we're going to leave it open on the weekends, who are we going to have? Obviously, we hope the police do their normal stroll by, um, but again, I, I, I don't, we don't have the money budgeted for it, open and close it on Saturday and Sunday.
And I, I think, I think it should be a facility that's open, I don't think we should say it's community walk hours from ten to eleven on Saturday morning. I think on a Saturday, you should be able to go and walk the track if you want to walk the track.
Yeah, but I think it's going to be clear, you know, after school hours, that kind of thing, I know it seems like you should just know, but that should be clear. And I, I would go back to your point that I think especially in the beginning, um, accountability is going to be important and taking care of that, so I know you're talking about individual accountability, but I really think we're going to need something in place to, to, you know, nobody really believes it until the first incident happens and somebody pays the consequence. So once that happens, I think it becomes more real, but we have to have the people in place to make sure that occurs. And my suggestion would be within that policy to have something that states, you know, there's a, maybe a first offense or something like that, but we reserve that right, I don't know if that's in there anywhere.
Yeah, it's, it's buried in there, yeah, but it says we reserve the right to avoid.
Not allowed to use the field and. Do track events happen usually around the same time during?
Do track events happen usually around the same time during the week? If there was, if there is an event? Same kind of day, same time at night after school?
Same time, days, I think, vary, huh?
Days vary, but this...
Four o'clock, I think it's three-thirty.
They take up a good part of the afternoon, even.
He was just saying, from the community standpoint, to know that that, someone could be out walking, and then all of a sudden...
Well, that's right, the track meet gets precedent, right.
You gotta go, you know, but if you had that posted, you know...
Hey, well, we had to post it because it does vary. It's not like, it's not like track meets always Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Official school or track events take precedence.
But I guess to Andrew's point, I mean, there are gates there, right? So we're not just gonna leave the gates, are you gonna just leave the gates open all the time? Is that the plan?
I would say personally, yes, but that's, that, we could discuss, you guys can discuss as a committee.
I've always wondered if that's the plan, so that would be the plan.
That would be my...
I don't like that plan.
I, I would like to see the gates actually closed, so a vehicle can't get in there.
But then you have... Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to get a vehicle in there.
That's what I'm concerned about, is a vehicle going on that field.
Right. But if you, if you do close the gates, then you have to have set times for the community, because they have to know when the gates are open.
So I think our intention was on Saturdays and Sundays for people to, people to be able to access the track, you know, and not, not just have community hours at a certain time.
I agree with that. So during the week, not?
Oh, during the week, too. I mean, but obviously, based on school, but based on school use, the school use always gets priority, and rental gets priority, and I think the field's gonna get a lot of action anyhow.
That's what I'm saying.
So I think there's gonna be a lot of people down there using those fields anyhow.
Yeah, let's hope so.
So...
Oh, it'll get a lot of use. The only question just becomes how well it's monitored, and I don't think having it open is just gonna be, you know, because how do you stop? How do you stop, you know, 12 kids wanting to come down and play flag football in the middle of the, on Saturday morning? You say, okay, you know, I mean, I, I just don't think it's a good idea. I don't think the free-for-all, everybody monitor themselves, no. But then you're right, then we have to figure out a plan to pay somebody eight bucks an hour.
As an organization, I'm using it, you need to monitor yourself. If, if there's gum on the track or on the turf field and you're booked to use it, I'm gonna come after you. You're the one that's using it. I'm not gonna have someone there all the time to watch everything that goes on.
Well, okay, then...
And we're, I think we're having distinct discussions a little bit, too. You know, obviously, and this is interesting, because I think it's a good discussion in the first half. So, you know, I would think use of the field itself, you know, go on the football field, the turf field, that that, no one should just be saying, hey, I'm gonna go down and use the turf field and have a baseball game on a Saturday morning. That's building use, they have to go sign it up and sign it out. I feel like the track's different, I don't want, I, I think there are people who walk the track.
Yep, definitely, and they have every right to do that.
And I don't feel like we should be looking to charge community members to kind of walk the track.
I do all want to judge.
I think we've been real, I think we've been real clear that we don't want to do that.
I don't want to judge.
But I also, I also have concerns about saying you can only walk the track on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. I think that's been some realistic timeframes.
I don't think that's what he's saying, but what I think what he's saying is, how do you distinguish the difference between somebody who's gonna go walk the track and 10 kids who are gonna go down and use the field while the people are walking the track?
I mean, they're right next to each other.
There's nobody there to monitor, how do you know?
It's legitimate.
Who's doing what?
We run into that problem right now. We have organizations who actually book our facilities and go, and someone else is practicing on the field.
Yeah.
And that's where we're trying to logistically have it mapped out, where you're booking it, you get first right. If we can incorporate the police or have one of our supervisors there to say, you're not registered, you're off the field.
Brad, when you reached out about...
Right, when there's, when somebody's booked an event.
Because they're booked.
When you, when you reached out about fees with other Abingtons, and I would be interested to know what they do as far as locking up and leaving it open. So if you could figure that out on that?
And I think that Mike Schultz would be a good person to do that, because I'm sure all, I'm sure the, all the ADs have specific policies in terms of access to their turf fields.
Yeah.
If we can access those fields.
We could see that, I think that would help a lot.
If we look at the...
Ashland signs up.
Ashland...
Or you can just, we can give an update. Yeah, just give an update. Any other questions on that?
Nothing else you want to get, Brad?
It's a work in progress.
No, it is, yeah, that's why I don't want to...
Just came into place today, so we can certainly go more in depth, and like I said...
Six fifty-seven.
Exactly, exactly. But you really don't hear from the community, which is good and bad, until it's in place and they get that first initial bill. But again, it goes back to the point of, we want our buildings as secure as possible, and I want to be able to hold people accountable. And if I have someone who I'm directing, I'm accountable to, they're accountable to me, the people who are renting have to be accountable to them, and we're, there's a chain to follow.
There is, and I think as a, as a committee, though, we're also responsible to this community who's invested a lot of money into making the right policy for this, so we need to make sure that when we make this decision, it's in what we think is the best interest of what's gonna work the best.
While keeping people, us, the buildings, the facility secure, that's why we talked about having multiple people having key cards, we don't know, you know, it's, that's unacceptable.
Also, I think it's important to maybe try and get as much feedback as we can before we start to make any of these decisions, either.
Are you gonna publish this to groups? Are you gonna do like a, how are you gonna push it out there? You have a plan?
I was just gonna hit them with the first bill and say, here you go. No, I'm just kidding. Really, I want it to start tonight. We've met with, we actually met with the rec department, and I know they just hired a rec director, I believe. So obviously, we want to work with them, too, to say this is what was going on, but we've already started the project process with working with the rec department, their subcommittee, to say, this is what we're planning, we just want you to know, because they're actually looking at, I think, something kind of similar, not too far down the road. I think they were charging $5 per person that got set up in a revolving account, that's gonna help offset field maintenance on their side, too. So again, we've started some outreach, but that's starting today, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Which is good, man, because we want, we want to hear from them, too, but reality is, we can't, we can't sacrifice the safety of our buildings.
But I think to Scott's point, too, it was advertised as a community field, and it needs to be a community field.
I'm talking, I'm talking interior, I'm not even talking exterior. I, I love having it open, to be honest with you. I'm all in favor of that, yeah.
So if nothing else for Brad, we move on to reports from the school committee.
I guess I'd just like to, you know, we won't talk again before school starts, so to the teachers, the staff, the kids, you know, it's, it was, it's gonna be quite, quite an amazing thing to see you guys walking in, and you girls, and everybody taking it all in, and it was a community fight to get it, and we got it, now it's there, and, you know, and really what I would say to the kids at home, do everything possible to, you know, maximize that building, you know what I mean? Really, because, because you're lucky, so, and you're, you're, the community came and really supported you, and which is great, and so I'm really excited for the, for the kids and for the teachers. It would be great to see, you know, we had a couple, we went through a walkthrough last week, and we had a couple people that would just walk through and, wow, thanks, like, this is awesome. And that was, that was great, because they were saying thanks to us as representatives